All right, I'm told that we have about fifteen seconds, so you can go ahead and start then.
All right, good evening, everyone. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, good evening, I'm gonna call the May twenty-six, twenty-twenty Planning Commission meeting to order. I believe it's our first virtual meeting, so bear with us, please, we'll do our best. I think maybe, um, I'll just start off by just doing a roll call of the commission members. Commissioner Kirk?
Present.
Commissioner Higgins? I think I saw Commissioner Higgins down there. Commissioner Farr?
Present.
I saw Commissioner Farr, Commissioner De Sanctus? De Sanctus, Commissioner Mehdi?
Present.
All right, and just a reminder, please to mute if you're not speaking. And then also welcome our new members. Marcos, Commissioner Toomey?
Present.
Present.
Great. And I believe the first item on the agenda is actually swearing in our new members. Julie, will you be on that?
To ask you to raise your right hand, Commissioner Marcos, and repeat after me. I, Rachel Marcos, do solemnly swear.
I, Rachel Marcos, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Planning Commission of the City of Eden Prairie.
Of the Planning Commission of the City of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Commissioner Toomey. If you would repeat after me, I, Lisa Toomey.
I, Lisa Toomey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Planning Commission of the City of Eden Prairie.
Of the Planning Commission of the City of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hennepin.
In the county of Hennepin.
And state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Commissioner Gooding? If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, William Gooding.
Hi, William.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Planning Commission of the City of Eden Prairie.
Of the Planning Commission of the City of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
In the county of Hennepin and the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
All right, welcome to our new members, congratulations. We look forward to meeting you. If we were there, I think there'd be cake and ice cream, but we're not, so, well, do it next time, maybe. All right, so we'll move on to the agenda this evening. Uh, first up, or second up, I guess, I pledge allegiance. So everyone, please rise and repeat after me. I'm not sure if the city's putting up a flag or not, so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank. We are certainly working out some new process here, for sure. All right, so first item on, or first public hearing on the agenda tonight is the Flying Cloud Commons. This is Castle Ridge Retail. Julie? Julie?
Approve first.
Oh, yes, sorry. I have to do the minutes from the last meeting. Meeting was on March ninth, twenty-twenty. Do you have any requests or edits or concerns about the minutes from that meeting?
I move to approve the minutes.
I have a motion for Commissioner Mehdi to approve the minutes, do I have a second?
Commissioner Kirk, second.
Commissioner Kirk, second, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye?
Aye.
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 Not approved. Okay, the minutes are approved, thank you, Julie, she should catch that for me. All right, now we're moving on to the public hearings this evening. Flying Cloud Commons, Castle Ridge Retail, twenty-nineteen dash twenty-one. This is a request for our planned unit development concept review on seven point two-seven acres. Planned unit development district review with waivers on seven point two-seven acres. Some very platter of one outlet into three flats and two outlets on seven point two-seven acres. Will the proponent of project leave? Uh, unmute and state your name.
Ian Hawker.
I'm sorry, Ian Hawker?
Correct, yeah, sorry, Ian Hawker.
Great, welcome, uh, are you gonna take us to your presentation this evening?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great. And the commission members, remember, one second, the commission members, if you have questions along the presentation, just, uh, wave your hand and I'll try to get to you.
Perfect. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up, uh, my PowerPoint, so bear with me one second. All right. Can everybody see that? All right, perfect, so, first off, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time to review this and, um, I appreciate the city of Eden Prairie, you know, as well as Julie Kleiman, working with us on this project that's taken some time to get to this point, but we're excited to be here and, um, you know, we really look forward to seeing this come together. So, just gonna click here, so, um, just kind of an overview of what I'll talk about, um, I'm gonna keep it, I'm gonna kind of hit everything on a high level, ultimately, what I want to do is I know there's a handful of commission members that are new, so I found it to be beneficial just to provide some context on the master plan, which originates from Presbyterian homes, um, and then talk about how that kind of gets integrated with our project, um, Flying Cloud Commons, and then outline kind of the goals of the development, um, some of the elements that impacted the site design and how we got there, and then just provide some questions, we've got our whole team here tonight, we actually have, um, Westwood, who is our civil engineer, so they'll be able to answer any sort of technical questions you might have, um, we also have our partner, um, Lakewins, so Dale Woodback, um, the CEO is here as well, and he'll be able to perform any questions you might have specifically in regards to the co-op, um, and then Chick-fil-A and Bank of America as well. So, Opit Development, um, you know, we're founded in nineteen ninety-one, we're a Minnesota-based developer, um, and we've actually built all throughout the country, but ultimately, you know, our past and our history originates in retail, specifically in grocery, um, retail development, so this is kind of our bread and butter, if you will, so we, um, we look forward to these projects, um, even during times like this, because we know it well. So, as we kind of step back and look at this from a high level, um, Castle Ridge redevelopment was the name of the overall project. Presbyterian Homes owns the land, they're the master developer, and there's nineteen point seven-five acres. So you can see, um, you know, they're building a two-hundred-and-seventy-four-unit independent living, assisted living, senior housing facility, um, and they're outlined in green. And then Timberland, um, is taking on their project, I believe it's Parabel they're calling it, and that's a five-to-seven-story, five-to-seven-story market rate apartment project, and that includes two-hundred-and-forty-six units, um, studios, one bedrooms and two. And, you know, all this land, um, was more or less kind of phased into the development in which Presbyterian Homes decided that it was best for them to partner with kind of key developers that really specialized in the specific type of product they wanted to see, um, at this site, kind of given the unique features of it, um, and, and I know they did a site in Wayzata where they took on the entire development themselves, I think, as they stepped back and kind of, you know, proceeded forward in two thousand and eighteen with this, they thought it was, um, beneficial to work with Timberland, who, you know, owns a significant amount of residential apartments throughout the Twin Cities, um, and beyond, actually, and, um, you know, they're doing a project obviously to the north here, and then, you know, they wanted to bring in the retail as an amenity, uh, to service the senior housing component as well as the market rate, and so, that's where we came into play. So here's just another kind of zoomed-out view, just to kind of give you some context, you have Prairie Center Drive right here, Flying Cloud Road, or Flying Cloud Drive, pardon me, right here, um, and then you can see our site as well, we have the grocer, Lakewins Co-op, um, Chick-fil-A is the restaurant, and then Bank of America, and then we have an outlaw here, um, you know, sixty to ninety days ago, we thought we had some restaurants that were looking at the site, and, you know, with COVID, uh, not a hundred percent certain what transpires there, but, you know, we have a handful of prospects that we've been talking to, we're just trying to find the right fit, um, so we feel good we'll find a good user for that site. And then we have, um, this guy right here, this is our, um, our, our pocket park, but ultimately, it's become kind of the park of the entire development, um, which is pretty unique and a nice feature for the project, it's just under um, point-eight acres, um, and it'll have an infiltration basin as well as, um, outdoor seating, um, and it'll be a gathering space for the entire development, so, um, we're pretty excited about just how everything has turned out to date. And so, when we first started this project, you know, we kind of stepped back and kind of looked at it overall, and we were working very closely with Presbyterian Homes and, uh, Timberland when we started out, and you know, we, we all kind of talked about some of the most important elements for the retail to be integrated in this project, and number one was, you know, really creating a sense of place, um, to kind of balance that with the senior housing residents that would be here, um, along with the market rate apartment residents, and then also thinking about the site in the context of, well, not just the immediate surrounding area, but also looking at the three-to-five-mile population, um, for kind of the greater Eden Prairie resident, uh, who'll be coming to the site. Number two, kind of looking at it from a sensible design perspective, looking at the integration of safe pedestrian walkways throughout the site, um, and intelligently designing that creates a long-term successful amenity to the community of Eden Prairie, um, by really balancing, you know, the, you know, the specific physical nature that a grocery store needs for the site with, you know, also trying to kind of meet the vision of the count plan of kind of creating a more dynamic, um, trade area, or I guess, uh, development that has, you know, more walkability and connectivity kind of merged within it. Um, and then number three, just a cohesive design through the master development with landscaping, sidewalk lighting, and class-one materials, um, we don't have specific standards for materials that every building is gonna look exactly the same, but obviously, they, you know, hold the standards of Eden Prairie. So, looking at this site, it's actually kind of unique from a retail perspective, um, and that's how we looked at it, but, you know, this site is located in the regional trade area, um, and so because of that, you know, it, it drives, well, there's a significant amount of traffic volume that's driven to this location, um, you know, Eden Prairie Mall, you know, is pulling from a ten-to-fifteen-mile radius arguably with, you know, people from Chanhas and then Chass come from two-twelve, um, people potentially from, you know, one-sixty-nine from, you know, Shakopee, um, you know, Savage even, to come up here, because this is the closest mall. And so because of that, um, we really had to kind of balance the fact that, you know, a lot of people are gonna be coming here for, um, you know, the grocery store or Chick-fil-A by automobile, and so merging that with, you know, the goal of having, um, I think, a well-designed site that has pathways that are safe, you know, for the residents in the immediate area to get here. Um, so we actually worked with Michael, I'm sorry, Max Musicant, early on in this process, um, to really kind of look at the site holistically, and understand some of the site forces, so that we knew how to design the site plan, and so, a couple of the takeaways I thought were important, um, you know, number one was the major materials, um, and you can see with the, the blue and red lines, that's Flying Cloud Drive and Prairie Center Drive, and, you know, essentially, they bring cars and customers to the site, um, but they also inhibit, you know, walking and biking across them due to the high traffic volume. Um, and so because of that, you, you can kind of see that the majority of the population is gonna be coming from some of the apartments located along Purgatory Creek, um, as well as the senior housing facility, and then Timberland's project, and then potentially to the north as well, with Timberland's other project, um, at Southwest Slight Rail Station, and so, uh, that was a real key component of this project and how we looked at it, and so, we saw Purgatory Creek's, you know, trail connection as a real natural amenity for the overall project, and we thought, you know, that was the right way to try to connect the site to the pedestrian, and then also still being cognizant of people coming here by automobile from Prairie Center and Flying Cloud Drive. So you can kind of see, this is just a zoomed-in version, just kind of showing the traffic counts here on Flying Cloud and then Prairie Center as well, um, and then, you know, we looked at the pedestrian traffic flow, um, and kind of understanding that everybody's coming from the west to the site, and the red just indicates what we kind of assume to be the highest, um, traveled. Oops. Prove. Sorry, somebody, uh, so, the, the red piece just outlines specifically the, um, heavy pedestrian traffic, yellow is the medium, where we see the least amount of people walking throughout the site, um, and then, you know, I'm sorry, uh, yellow being medium and green being the lightest. I don't know what happened here. How do I get through this? All right, so, um, this shows the site plan, um, just indicating some of the design features that we, we talked about earlier, um, you know, into this project, and, you know, the, the red hash lines or dash lines, pardon me, you know, outlines the specific pathways for the pedestrian getting through this site, um, and then you can see uh, Lakewins specifically here, you can see we have this orange kind of outlined as well, and that shows what we're considering the more active pedestrian edges of the building, so just being able to connect to those sites, um, or those connect, connect to those portions of the building, um, you know, by, um, our pathway system within the site was critical, but also balancing that automobile to be able to get into the site to service, um, you know, the grocer, uh, as well as, you know, Chick-fil-A and the bank, and then we have our, our pocket park here as well, that shows the pathways that connect to the senior housing facility, as well as Timberland's project here. And this is kind of the secondary plaza, which we don't ultimately see being utilized as much for, you know, people coming from Flying Cloud or Prairie Center, but we see this as, um, you know, an amenity for Chick-fil-A, um, and some of their patrons of the restaurant. So, kind of one key component of this project that we, you know, I mentioned earlier, was really looking at this, this central plaza feature of the development, because it became kind of larger as we worked with Presbyterian Homes and, and Timberland, um, you know, we, we wanted to make sure that it, it was a focal point of the project, and how can we, you know, more or less kind of maximize the potential that can come from it? Um, and so right now, as we kind of envision it today, and what we've kind of designed in, in terms of the landscape plan is, you know, have movable seating in there, um, lawn tables, um, you know, there'll be events, performances, pop-up markets, things of that nature, um, and we kind of envisioned, you know, a lot of senior housing residents coming out, you know, with potentially their relatives as they come to visit, going to Lakewins to grab a sandwich or some, you know, salad or something to eat, and then coming out here and just hanging out, um, it's a fairly large parcel, it's about point-seven-one acres in total, so, um, you know, we see that as a wonderful amenity for this project, and it'll serve Timberland's project as well, as well as the senior housing component, um. So, just to kind of look at the site plan one more time, ultimately, Lakewins is roughly twenty-five thousand square feet, um, Chick-fil-A's five thousand, and the Bank of America's just over thirty-five hundred square feet, um, we have the pocket park here, uh, this is the other component of the project, which is a plaza, and, um, you know, I'll do another site, whoops, let me go back one more, sorry about that, um, you know, just looking at this project overall, I think, you know, one of the biggest things for us was this balancing, um, you know, for Lakewins, and I, I have Dale, um, Dale's on, you know, the line as well here with us, and he can jump in too, but, you know, one thing that we had to be cognizant of is looking at the site, how can we kind of best bridge the gap from, you know, trying to create instead of a sea of parking for the site, um, really kind of merge this walkable element into the project and make sure that there's adequate connection points, and so, you know, with the grocer, especially Lakewins, um, you know, they pull from a very large radius, and as we got to work with Dale, one of his comments was that, you know, we pull a lot of times from ten miles, um, and our customers will come here, so, to get here, you know, they're traveling by automobile, so just making sure we had that parking that would fit his need to be, you know, best suited for him to succeed here was critical for us, and so, given the shape and the irregular kind of, um, shape of the parcel, ultimately, I think this is, um, you know, a really good design that kind of came from it, but, um, you know, we feel very confident that this is gonna be a great project for the, you know, neighborhood, as well as the city of Eden Prairie and, um, beyond, but, um, we're very excited to be able to work with Lakewins on this, and, um, you know, see their kind of unique elements incorporated into this project and how they're gonna bring, I think, um, you know, a lot of unique features to this particular master plan, specifically for, you know, the senior housing residents as well as, um, Timberland's market rate apartment residents, and I think they see this as a real nice amenity for just the immediate area, but obviously, there's, you know, gonna be a greater impact as well on the entire city of Eden Prairie, so, um, that's all I had, really, just to kind of provide a quick overview of the project, um, I guess I'll end it with any questions that you guys might have, um, and I can keep this up too.
Thank you, Ian, appreciate that. Uh, we'll go to questions initially from the commissioners, it's like Commissioner Mehdi has a question to start.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Mehdi here, um.
Yes.
My question, and it explained this a little bit in, um, I think, the, the report that was sent, but is this all being constructed together, or can you kind of explain the responsibility between the three buildings, how that's getting coordinated, it's all being built by you guys? Um, or is, is there a different kind of schedule with each building?
For the retail portion specifically, or, yeah, okay, so.
Yes.
The way the project will work is this, unfortunately, well, fortunately, unfortunately, the, the scheduling with Presbyterian Homes is the way they kind of outline this project is that all their current existing residents moved into the, um, Castle Ridge facility, that, the Broadmore Building that's located on our parcel, and so, once they finish their building to the west, their new one, they'll relocate those residents, and then we'll demo that building, we'll take possession, um, which is likely to be Q four of two thousand and twenty-one, um, unfortunately, we were hoping that'd be a little bit sooner, but, um, from there, our plan is to, you know, work with Lakewins, Lakewins will build their building, but we'll take care of the site work for them, and then Chick-fil-A as well will build their building, and they will probably do those projects, I would imagine, simultaneously, as well as Bank of America. So, they're actually each building their own building, we're just handling the site work, um, for the entire project.
Okay, so you're, you're prepping the site together for everybody, but each, each, uh, building, meaning bank, grocery, and Chick-fil-A, is being built by, by those tenants themselves with potentially different contractors?
Correct, I mean, and there might be some, um, cross-pollination, but ultimately, I envision, I mean, they're gonna all build most likely around the same time, Lakewins will probably, they're gonna kick off the project first, and then, you know, we'll have to coordinate everybody's building, um, kind of around that, but, um, yes, they're all gonna be building it individually.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Kirk, I believe, has a question.
Hi, this is Commissioner Kirk, and could you, I, I, I know I'm gonna ask you to look into the, the, uh, future here, but could you, could you talk to us a little bit about your Outlet B, and do you anticipate that that to be built at, at the same time, in other words, between now and when you actually start construction, that you'll, you'll have, uh, um, the, the people who are going to build there all lined up and ready to go, is, is that the plan?
Yeah, I hope so, um, I think we will, I think, I, I do, I, I think, you know, fortunately, unfortunately, you know, the timing of this project, and with COVID and everything kind of coupled together with it, I envision we'll likely identify hopefully user, uh, for that pan, um, or that outlaw, pardon me, and then we'll be able to coordinate, you know, the construction, obviously, we'll kind of, once we get to the real nitty-gritty of the phasing of how this will all shape out, um, you know, with Lakewins and Chick-fil-A, I think, we'll in theory, we'll break ground and build their building simultaneously, so that's my hope.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, other initial questions from the commissioners before we go to the planners' report?
Mr. Chair, it looks like Commissioner De Sanctus has a question.
Yes, Commissioner De Sanctus. Thank you, Julie.
Commissioner De Sanctus, you're on mute, you're gonna need to unmute your mic.
There you go, I think you're off now.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, Ian, the roadway that is, uh, circulating around the inner parking lot, will that be a public, uh, maintained roadway, private, and if private, which entity will be responsible for its maintenance?
So it'll be a private road, uh, the ring road I, you're talking about, and, and that road will be, um, well, with, within our agreement, um, it'll be maintained by Presbyterian Homes, well, within our actual, were, were you referring to the one that actually goes around through our project or on the west side of it, behind, I guess, the west side of Lakewins?
Well, the one that would go to the west of the Lakewins development.
That one will be, um, maintained by Presbyterian Homes.
Okay.
We all collectively maintain it, but, um, they'll be the ones in charge of it as the manager.
All right.
Great, it looks like Commissioner Farr has a question, please.
Uh, good evening, this is Commissioner Farr, um, two questions real quick, uh, first, um, were you, as an applicant, asked to update or review the traffic report that had been shown to us when we looked at this master plan, um, maybe a year or a year and a half ago, and, uh, specifically any impacts on your layout and development, uh, perhaps, uh, the drive-through restaurant traffic, um, and compare it to those previous results and recommendations?
Yeah, I, I can take a second, Jeff or David, if you don't mind jumping in as well, but, uh, one thing specifically was, there's a, um, that came, so we can update the traffic study from the very first one that you probably are, you're referring to, um, and from that, there was a couple of points that were integrated in this project, one in particular was, there was a sheer accessway that existed between our project, where Chick-fil-A is, a lot to, and then fountain place, um, that shopping center, and there's technically an OEA that allows for this easement there, while the recommendation was to remove that, and we removed it, um, and there was a handful of other items, uh, Jeff or David, I don't know if you want to speak to either one specifically, but.
Was the north with Westwood, uh, yes, there were a few other comments regarding truck turning movements, and we've addressed those comments with making a little bit bigger curbs and whatnot for truck movements, and also restricting some truck turing, so they can only turn left instead of right, I guess, we have a, we taking those all into account.
Okay, any comments on the density or the, uh, the application of retail, and specifically retail drive-throughs, on the impact of the findings?
I don't have anything to comment on in relation to that, you know, overall, I, you know, which is fascinating, but, um, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, what was unique about it was the traffic volume actually from the initial plan with the hotel actually, you know, remained about constant, um, so there wasn't a significant change, and you'd think with a grocery store with a hotel, it'd be a lot more, but there really wasn't, um, and I think part of that was, we did reduce the retail that was outlined in Outlet B, um, as well as the fact that, um, you know, some of the multiple-use, um, traffic that's gonna be coming into our site significantly changes compared to the first one with the hotel where that was, you know, if you're going to a hotel, you're going to a hotel, and that's usually it, whereas. Whereas now there's a lot of kind of cross pollination with somebody going to the grocery store, it could go in Chick-fil-A and it could go to the bank. So overall, the traffic volume remained, from my recollection, fairly constant with the first one. And then the other point that was interesting as well as, you know, as we look at it now, Sunday's obviously usually a fairly, you know, busy day for grocery shopping, but Chick-fil-A and the bank are both closed on Sunday. So that traffic volume isn't going to be a significant on this side as well during that timeframe. So there were a couple of points I think are pretty beneficial overall that have come from this new design of this site plan from the last time.
Okay, thank you. My second question, maybe just a little bit too detailed right now, but I want to ask it just for, because everything is so compact on the Bank of America site specifically, on the west side where the drive-through lanes come through. There seems to be one active lane that does business. And then there's a bypass lane that shows up outboard of the, the business lane. And then yet outboard of the bypass lane is another aisle, parking aisle before the parking stalls start. And maybe, you know, David, you might know, is there a reason why we have so much asphalt between the business lane? I think we're duplicating a, a lot of pavement there between the bypass lane and the parking aisle being redundant. And that may play into other future comments of mine, but I just wanted some feedback on that to make sure I'm understanding your site plan properly.
Yeah, thanks Ed. This is David Bade with Westwood. I can speak to that as well. So this, the Bank of America layout was really worked in conjunction with Bank of America specifically. We, we are looking to that as a one-way throughway and really that extra, extra area is just to provide safety. So the people, when they're backing out, they're backing out sort of into that one-way traffic. So we want to make sure that we're keeping all of that traffic that's backing safely away from anybody who is stacking in those two, two bays.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My pleasure. Commissioner Farr, Commissioner De Sanctus has a question.
Again, I have a question. This may be best addressed by the Lake Winds VP. But I assume that in doing the market analysis for this grocery store, that consideration was given to Aldi's and Target being within about a quarter mile of the Lake Winds site. Assuming, I'm assuming that they're calculating different demographics would be attracted to the various grocery sites. A little concerned about the density of grocery shopping in that immediate commercial area.
Do you want me to address that, Ian?
Yeah, Dale, it'd be great if you, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we employ a third-party company that does trade area studies for grocery stores. And the, the outcome was that this is going to be a very successful site for us. We're really excited about the, the results of that. And they won't tell you, the third-party doesn't tell you, of course, how their soup is mixed, but it's, it's demographic. They take census data and demographic data and slice it and dice it. And it is, we are a different demographic than a couple of the retailers you mentioned. But we've got a high degree of confidence in, in this company. We've used them for several projects and they're, they're pretty, they're very reliable with their projections. We've got a three-year sales projection starting from opening day that allows us to build a pro forma and, and prove out that this is likely to be a very successful site.
Did you have a follow-up, Commissioner De Sanctus?
No.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. I don't have anyone else in queue for initial question. So why don't we go to Julie with the planners' report? I assume you're taking care of that tonight, Julie?
Yes, sir, I will. So as Mr., excuse me, as Mr. Hocker mentioned, this is the third phase of the Castle Ridge project. And this commercial component, as you've seen on your plans, will be done in two phases. So this first phase includes two outlots and three commercial sites for development. The commercial sites, as you see, are grocery store, a Chick-fil-A fast food restaurant and a Bank of America. Both the Chick-fil-A and the Bank of America do have drive-through facilities as a part of them. So first of all, I'd like to kind of cover some of the overall, the design features. And then I'll talk in a little more detail about each of the individual parcels. So because this parcel or this project area is part of a master plan, there is some coordination that is occurring between this and the Presbyterian Homes and the Paravel site. So for instance, things coordinated amenities such as lighting and landscaping plans and site furniture, you know, whether that's benches or trash receptacles, those types of things will be coordinated for a cohesive look throughout the three-phase project. There will be pedestrian connections so that residents of Paravel or the Presbyterian Homes project can provide in or are provided an access into the commercial area so that they can frequent to those restaurants or uses, whatever ultimately might be in some of those spots. So there is, there is a visual coordination and a physical connection between the first. Now, the plans, as you see them, show development on Outlet B. That is illustrative only at this point just to show what development potential could exist on that site. It is expected that the developer, once they have finalized those plans, will submit a new application and take those through the review process. So at that point, you get to see specific landscaping plans and architecture plans and uses and further pedestrian connections if necessary. So you'll be seeing those details at a later date. So tonight, we're focusing more on the three lot lots and the Outlet A that's supposed to function largely as a gathering area for the, not only the commercial component, but as Mr. Hocker talked about, the residents of the other commercial, or excuse me, residential portions. So within the individual sites that are proposed with this evening's project, I'll start with the Chick-fil-A. As you know, it's a fast food drive-through facility. The drive-through does propose double lanes along the Flying Cloud Drive frontage. As a part of their proposal, they are proposing a standalone canopy structure. The intent or purpose of that standalone structure is to provide refuge from the elements such as, you know, sun, wind, rain, snow. It is Minnesota, so snow for folks that would be standing out in those drive-through lanes, taking orders on iPads before the drivers get up to the traditional ordering area. So as you can see from the information that was shared in your staff report, you know, it is a roofed structure to provide that protection. And the structure itself encroaches into the 35-foot front yard setback. So the developer is requesting a waiver to allow a front yard setback of 20 feet. Staff has had multiple conversations with the developer and Chick-fil-A representatives about the standalone canopy structure. And staff is recommending that that structure be removed from the plans prior to city council review of this project for the reasons that the structure is not consistent with the city's design guidelines and performance standards specifically related to building materials. And of course, the setback because they're seeking a waiver for that. So staff is recommending that that be removed prior to city council review. And staff is recommending that that setback waiver not be approved. And that is included in your staff report as a part of that recommendation. In other news on the Chick-fil-A site, the, the building itself does exceed the city code requirements for building materials and architectural requirements. There were several iterations that the developer and staff have worked through resulting in what you see before you today. So there was a lot of back and forth and improvement frankly, in helping present the building that you have, that you see today. The site also exceeds the parking requirements for the site. So the parking that is provided on site is reflective of Chick-fil-A's business need, which exceeds what city code would require for a building of this size. The Lake Winds property, as Mr. Hocker mentioned, initially when you saw the first PUD concept review, there was a hotel shown on that site. Since then, Opadan has worked with Lake Winds and is bringing that forward as a part of this proposal. The architecture, it meets and exceeds the architectural requirements of the city code. The building materials appear to comply with city requirements, but that is just a detail that staff is asking for some confirmation on prior to city council. It is information that was included early on in the submittal process, but we want to make sure we get those calculations on this most recent version that's been submitted. And there are amenities provided on and near this lot as a part of the gathering area. And the pedestrian, there are pedestrian connections provided through the parking lot because of the commercial area. This particular lot has the biggest parking lot of the other commercial uses. So there are pedestrian connections provided through that lot as well. The Bank of America site does meet and exceed building material, architectural and parking requirements for the site. So there isn't quite as much to say about that Bank of America site. It does not have a standalone trash enclosure as does the Chick-fil-A. Both of them having provided their trash enclosures within the building, so there wouldn't be a separate structure out in the parking lot. And as Mr. Hocker discussed, the timing for construction of this project is looking to be in early 2020, excuse me, early 22 for a beginning of that construction. Because the property is subject to a PUD, there are a few waivers that are being requested as part of the PUD. The first waiver that I wanted to talk about is a waiver for a lot without public street frontage. As Mr. Hocker mentioned in response to one of the commissioner's questions, the drive that runs through the project area is a private street. So that Lake Winds lot does not have any frontage on a public street, but it does have frontage on a private street. And a waiver of that sort is fairly typical in these types of development projects. They're also seeking waivers with regard to lot size, lot width and lot depth. And again, that's largely a function of the fact that through the PUD process, they can utilize the property more efficiently with smaller lot sizes and lot dimensions than what is prescribed by code. Again, there are several instances where the city has approved waivers to lot size and lot width and lot depth as a part of an overall master plan. The landscaping plan that was proposed by the applicant is very robust and appears appropriate for the site. There are some additional details that staff would like to work through on that to address specific code requirements. So as you can see from your staff report, there's a handful of items that staff is comfortable with recommending be addressed prior to city council review. The applicant is aware of these and they are also comfortable with being able to address that in the time between planning commission and city council review. And so there is the possibility that as we work through those finer details and finer calculations, that there may be a need to request a waiver to landscaping or tree replacement as those calculations get a little more polished up. Staff does recommend that if there is a shortage on either of those, that the tree replacement requirements be met through the payment in lieu option that city code provides as an alternative. And any waiver requests be considered as part of the landscaping requirement so that there wouldn't be a waiver to both tree replacement and landscaping as we work out those, those, as I said, calculation details. The last waiver that I wanted to talk about is the parking island dimensions. So city code requires that parking islands be provided within parking lots. Those parking islands are to be a minimum of five feet in dimension and a minimum of 160 square feet in size. There are a multitude, I apologize, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but there's a multitude of parking islands within the project. And there are a few of them that do not meet that dimension in all locations. So what that means is that island meets the five-foot requirement at some point in its, its measurement. But it, because of its design, in order to fit into the parking, parking lot design, there's a pinch point where it gets less than five feet in width. So they're requesting a waiver to a couple of, I think it's five parking islands because they don't meet the dimension through the entire length of the parking island. And there are also a handful of parking islands that are less than 160 square feet in size. Now, with that being said, city code also requires that 5% of a parking area be landscaped islands. When you calculate the total landscape island area within this project, it's at 12%. So they far exceed the 5% requirement. But as a part of some of that design specific to the site, some of those islands need to be designed a little more creatively in order to provide that 12% of, of parking lot island area. So staff is recommending approval of those waivers. However, as I said earlier, we are recommending that the parkings, or excuse me, the front yard setback for the standalone canopy structure, we are not recommending approval of that particular waiver. So with that, that is, pretty much wraps up my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have as commissioners.
Great. Thank you, Julie. Do we have any initial questions from the commissioners for Julie? It looks like Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair Piper. Quick question, Julie or Rod maybe. On Commonwealth Drive that gets extended down, on the original master plan we looked at, was there angled parking on both sides of that Commonwealth Drive? Specifically where the Lake Winds backs up to now that got removed as part of this plan? Or was there never angled parking on that, what would it be, east side of Commonwealth Drive across the street from the senior center?
I can't see Rod on my screen, so I'll take a stab at that, at that question. My recollection is that part of Commonwealth Drive extended did not have angled parking, that the angled parking was only to the north along Outlet A area.
Okay, so we're not looking at a parking count that is netted some, some amount of parking that was removed from the master plan and other added? It's all additive?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is my recollection as well. And if you'll, the parking, the angled parking that is provided on Commonwealth Drive, those parking stalls, because they're not on the Lake Winds lot or the Chick-fil-A or Bank of America lot, that is excess parking to the site. So that is not calculated in any of the site specifics.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Farr, any other questions before we go to public hearing piece? Commissioner Kirk?
Julie, this may not be a question for you. Commissioner Kirk, by the way, this may not be a question for you, but I'm curious as to any experience that Chick-fil-A has with such a canopy for ordering for northern winter oriented climate sites. The, the idea behind the, the canopy seems to be more applicable in, how shall I say, a more moderate weather area than here. And I'm just wondering if there's any experience that Chick-fil-A has on that, on, you know, the time at the, the number of months that is actually usable.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I see that on our screen that we have Jennifer Santelli from Chick-fil-A that's joined our meeting. So that might be a question that she'd be better suited to answer.
Yeah, thank you, Julie, Commissioner. We have a lot of experience using the, using the canopy in northern climates. We don't have a lot of them built in Minnesota yet, but we had, but we do have them in Illinois, Wisconsin, northern, northern New York, upstate New York, I suppose they say. Places like that where they do, they do in fact get a lot of snow and have at least similar conditions to Minnesota. I'm based in Atlanta, but I'm actually from Duluth, Minnesota. So I totally understand the, the cold conditions. It, it's really meant to have a place for those outdoor employees to, to go to have that refuge. And they do function very well. We, we do use them year-round in the places that we do use them. We don't always have out, people outside taking orders. We really do that more, like you'll see that probably on. We really do that more, like you'll see that probably on a Saturday afternoon, which is our typical peak during the week. But you know, like on a Monday at breakfast, you're not going to have somebody out there taking orders. It's really meant to help facilitate getting orders back to the kitchen faster during our peak drive-through times to really speed up that experience in the drive-through. And it's also meant to have more of the hospitality that Chick-fil-A is known for. You know, we're an Atlanta-based company, and southern hospitality is a big thing for us. So to have somebody who go through the drive-through and you're actually talking with the real people, not the box. And there's really that component of it. And the canopy does help. It helps in all the weather conditions. I mean, obviously, if there's the blizzards and, you know, it's the polar vortex has come down, we're not going to have people out there taking orders. But yeah, it helps when the weather conditions aren't awesome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great. Any other, I'm not seeing if there's any other, Commissioner De Sanctus. You're on mute, Commissioner De Sanctus.
Hello? Okay, it seems to be going out intermittently. So you can hear me clearly. I have a two-part question. The first is, I did not see bicycle racks under the sustainable feature bullet points. And I was wondering if there was concern about encouraging bicyclists to mix with the motor vehicle traffic that you anticipate with these two commercial establishments. What was the thinking behind excluding the bike rack provision?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I'll take a first stab at that. So there are bike racks that are proposed within the project area, both in the Outlet A gathering space, on the Lake Winds property, I believe, and in the gathering space at the corner of Flying Cloud Drive and Prairie Center Drive. So if they were not specifically mentioned within the sustainability elements, I apologize, that was my error, because they certainly are within the plans.
The second part of my question had to do with solar lighting. Was there any provision for introducing solar lights, either as ground-based lights or as a supplemental source of energy, sustainable energy for the LED system?
Julie, would you like me to answer that?
Sure, Ian, if you'd like to.
And I might ask Jeff for his help as well on that. But, you know, we did look at different solar energy components into this project, but we didn't integrate specific ones for the lighting system, to my recollection. But Jeff, I know you know the cut sheets on those. Do we, I can't recall, I don't have it in front of me. In regards to the solar lighting, did we use kind of ground solar lighting throughout the site to be incorporated in the landscape area?
This is Jeff at Westwood. We followed what was done on Press Homes and the apartment project as far as the type of lighting. And I do not believe any of those had solar lights on the.
Certainly something we can look into, though. I mean, if there's different features, but I know keeping the consistency amongst the three projects was important, and that was brought up a handful of times. So, you know, maybe there's other elements that we can look into.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hand waving at me at the moment. All right, so this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to be recognized and speak for or against these projects or project, please unmute and state your name or wave if you're on video. And I'll just give it a few seconds here to see if anyone would like to come forward. Okay, I've not seen anyone or hearing anyone. Last call, anyone would like to speak regarding this project in the public hearing portion? Okay. I will entertain a motion from one of our commissioners to close the public hearing portion.
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing from Commissioner Kirk.
All right, a motion to close the public hearing from Commissioner Kirk. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion. Commissioner Farr?
Commissioner Farr with a second. All of those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed to closing the public hearing portion? Okay, the public hearing's closed. All right, further discussion amongst the commission members. Commissioner Mehdi, I see.
I'll just kind of rattle through some of my comments. First one is, I'm glad to see a grocery store. Sorry, I'm hearing some interference. I don't know. Hopefully that's not me. I'm glad to see a grocery store here. I think this is.
If everyone else could mute, that'd be great. Thank you.
I think the grocery store is a great anchor for the center, amenity for the site, and the community in general. Having a co-op is great, something we don't have in Eden Prairie. So I'm excited to see that, and I think overall, this is a really good plan. I'm in support of the staff report, which recommends denial of the canopy and the setback waiver related to the canopy. I can discuss that further if need be, but I'll just leave it at that. One thing that I felt was missing with this was, that I'd like to see would be more of a cohesive architecture element between this. I mean, ultimately, I think this is going to look like three separate developments. And then when the Outlet B gets done, that'll be five separate developments. You know, next door at Fountain Place, it seems like that architecture is more cohesive. Unless I'm wrong on that, I think there's a couple buildings that have, you know, similar style and architecture. But again, just, you know, food for thought. My thought would be if, you know, there was, you know, let's say a certain brick that everybody used as, you know, their main, you know, building body color. And then the other brick or accents, or with the Bank of America, the cultured stone and all of that can be different, and obviously different architecture. But I just think something to make it look like, especially since at the corner, we have, the two buildings are framing that corner, but they're looking completely different. Again, that would be something that I guess I would have preferred to see. I also think just kind of individual comments on the architecture of the Chick-fil-A Bank of America. You know, I know that maybe they're both kind of increased their design to meet some of the finish or the building exterior type that we have as our requirement. But, you know, I've seen a number of the new Bank of Americas all around the Twin Cities. They all seem to be a little bit different, unique. And I don't mind the architecture of it, but it did seem like the entire building is completely monotone. So whether it be, you know, difference in colors of the materials or parapet cap, accent metal, I don't know, but it was all one color. And then the Chick-fil-A, too, I mean, it's their standard suburban design and color scheme. If there was a way, again, to have something more cohesive, I think that would make this overall site look better, because it is, you know, going to be, I think, a very prominent corner of Eden Prairie. I like the design of the two park spaces. I think those are great. I think they're going to get use. I think the connections are good, about as good as we can expect to have. And then one of the waivers, so the parking setback waiver on the Chick-fil-A parking lot, I mean, I'll, you know, I'll agree to what the staff report says. I don't want to cause, you know, an exception, because it's a minor kind of thing. But, you know, my thought would be that I think it would be better to have at least a couple feet from the property line. And you could potentially make those stalls angled parking to make them a little bit shorter. You might lose two. Even more dramatic would be parallel, and I don't think you would need a setback at all if they were parallel. But it seemed, you know, all the way up against the property line. I know you're going to have to go to the other property owner. If I were them, I probably wouldn't like that either. So I would suggest at least a couple feet and try in some angled parking situation there. So I will, I'll leave it at that. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Mehdi, would you like anyone to speak to any of those points?
Sure, if anyone has a comment. Again, I think my comments aren't necessarily requirements, and you for sure should do this. I'd be curious what other commissioners think, but also, you know, when it comes time for city council, ultimately what they think on the design. But if anyone has any thoughts on that, sure, go ahead. It doesn't require response, but I'm happy to hear what any of the users or developer has to say.
Not seeing, oh, there you go. Ian's going to start, just hit off mute. You know, in regards to the architectural components of the project, I mean, we're, you know, designing it to the city's code ultimately. So I think the thing is that, you know, there's a high finish level across the board for these projects. And I think that cohesiveness is probably, you know, somewhat fine within the city code, I would suspect from architectural standards. So hopefully, some may haven't seen it from that perspective as well. But, you know, the biggest, you know, we tried to keep the cohesiveness was the landscaping. And that was one element that was really critical, the Presbyterian homes, as well as Timberland and staff as well that was brought up. Your other comment as well about the angled parking, I'm not, we can look into that. We've kind of gone round and round on this parking right there and trying to figure out the best scenario there, because it's just kind of an odd-shaped site ultimately. And so trying to, you know, fit the right parking design there is critical. And I think this is the best, but we can clearly look into it as well and see. But those are my only comments. I don't know, Jeff, if you have any thoughts too on the parking or anything. But we can definitely look into those items.
Yeah, this is Jeff at Westwood. We can definitely look at the angled parking. My only concern is those last couple ones by the drive-thru would then be forced to go into the drive-thru, or they'd have to back up a lot farther to make the loop back out. But we can definitely look into it.
Thank you. You know, I had the same thought on the angled parking and the drive-thru. When you look at the current site plan, though, that last stall pretty much backs up directly into the drive-through lane. So I think you're dealing with that condition in either of those events. But thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, then I had Commissioner Kirk up next.
Commissioner Kirk here. Just to build on Commissioner Mehdi's comments, we face, you know, so many times where the individual businesses branding versus the City of Eden Prairie's kind of style and what's in our ordinances, and how to balance that. Because we know it's important for the individual business owners to have the branding. And many times, the building is a significant part of their branding. And yet, we also have a style that is Eden Prairie, and we have to balance that. And I agree with, to a point, Commissioner Mehdi's comments about, you know, trying to make it a little more uniform and all. But I also agree with her point on the Chick-fil-A canopy. You know, I think that's what came to mind, is that's a bridge too far or maybe a canopy too far on stretching kind of the Eden Prairie style. So I want to honor the ability of the business owners to brand their facilities to a point. And unfortunately, on this one, I would agree with the staff's comments about the canopy. It just isn't a great fit, at least today, right now, for Eden Prairie. So otherwise, I think I'm particularly enthused by the two gathering spots, particularly that almost three-quarters of an acre, you know, kind of center gathering spot for the overall, you know, development. And I think there's a lot of real positives, and I'm looking forward to the businesses and hopefully the additional businesses in Outlet B that will be added to the community here. So I'm in favor of it, and in fact, I'm in favor of the waivers as the staff report looks at them.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk. Other commission members? Questions or commentary? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair Commissioner Farr here. I have maybe two mouthfuls of things to say, and I'm just going to go through in the order of kind of lot by lot, and then talk about the whole site. First lot, one, Lake Winds. I like the contemporary design of that. I like the canopy on the front side and that one north side. But the continuity of that design kind of falls apart. It's not foresighted architecture when the building is in fact a fishbowl on all four sides. Facing the Commonwealth Drive side, it's very tight to the road, and there's not pedestrian scaled elements along that long facade. There's some clear-story windows at the top, but it's not a friendly walk past that store with such a tight setback from the curb there. And I think some foresighted architecture is warranted on that west side of the Lake Winds building. I noticed the pylon sign in the renderings, but I didn't notice it on the site plans. Julie mentioned that that's under a separate permit, so I don't want to dwell on signs too much. But the style of the pylon sign didn't seem to attempt to create any special consistency of signage design throughout the park. And I'm assuming that it will be enforced that there's some commonality of elements like sign bases and styles, so that each individual user doesn't have their own unique sign that is not consistent with a common theme of sign bases. I might draw your attention to the one example that I like on a grocery store that has to back up to the street. It's in St. Louis Park's west end on Park Place there. You've probably seen it, where there's a Cub Foods on the east side of Park Place Boulevard. Zero setback, very well-designed pedestrian-oriented features along that facade that really assist that setback with the back of a grocery store. Going on to lot two, Chick-fil-A. I like the fact that they did foresighted architecture here. I think that's great. I also like the contemporary design. And I like the fact that that trash area is integrated into the south side of the building, so it's not a separate doghouse. Regarding that variance on the south side up against Fountain Place, I was warm or cool to it. I wasn't quite sure until I realized that they're parking 14 more parking stalls on that site than are required by code. And so I thought, well, there's only 11 cars there that are in violation of the variance. It seems to me, if we're going to allow that many more cars on the site, they should at least meet zoning code. So I'm going to take exception to the variance request there, because they have extra stalls. The canopy points that Commissioner Mehdi and Kirk made are spot on. I agree that the canopy, given the front yard setback variance request, isn't warranted. Because it's freestanding and disengaged for the building, frankly, I think it looks like a gas station canopy. And I know that while the southern hospitality with a smile on the face assists in marketing, and I think that's very important for their branding, I think that can be done with technology, where instead of having physical employees standing out there with an iPad in the middle of winter, you can have that same employee's nice smiley face on a screen where they're in the warm building. And there's a TV screen that they can assist and kind of push along the car order faster than just a standard menu kiosk. So I think technologically, I think they can solve that. And they don't need to have people standing outside. We don't have to build gas station canopies over their head to solve that problem. I was a little disappointed that the landscape plan doesn't attempt to do any landscape screening of the drive-through headlights. Minnesota winters get a little dark, and that long line of headlights, especially for the Chick-fil-A, points right up traffic on southbound Prairie Center Drive. And there's deciduous trees, overstory trees planted, but no sense of a landscape hedge that would stop those headlight views from shining into the eyes of people going 50 miles an hour. That can be worked out, of course. And the bike parking, I noticed, was pulled away from the front. And the bike parking I noticed was pulled away from the front door on Chick-fil-A for some reason. I think that, that can be a very popular place to park your bike right in front of the door. But instead of, it's over 100 feet away in that, um, uh, corner plaza area that you have at Flying Cloud Drive and Prairie Center Drive. And I think 100 feet away is a little bit excessive for the compact nature of the, of the business. Probably the most thing that bothers me on Chick-fil-A is the discontinuation of the loop sidewalk system. Uh, Mr. Hawker went to great lengths to explain the sensitive nature of vehicular and pedestrian, uh, circulation on this property. And I think that's paramount. He, he also made a comment about looping. Uh, that's also very important, especially for senior citizens who want to get out and do some exercise and not necessarily need to do business, but they need to take a walk or a stroll around the block. And to have the loop, uh, discontinuous and interrupted its Chick-fil-A is, uh, completely unforgivable in my eyes. Uh, I'll speak more about that when I get to the site plan. Lot three, the Bank of America. Uh, we talked about that duplication of pavement on the, uh, aisle way on the, on the west side. I was hoping that the answer was going to be, we have extra pavement, uh, so that we could maybe square the building off instead of having it be rectangular. It's extraordinarily close to that loop street that you have about eight feet away from the curb. And there's a sidewalk between the curb and the building. Uh, there's no pedestrian, uh, elements on the facade at all, like windows, even if it's spandrel glass windows. I know there aren't offices on that site. But it's a blank wall eight feet away from a curb trying to squeeze a pedestrian, uh, sidewalk there. And, um, I, I thought you could push the building a little bit further north by squaring it off and taking advantage of that pavement that's extra on the west to balance off your square footage. Uh, just my two cents there. Again, the, the landscape screening on the drive-through, uh, the, the queuing of cars, uh, headlights, uh, face the eastbound traffic on Prairie Center Drive. And I think a hedge row would solve that problem. So getting to the site plan in general, um, the, the architectural element that Commissioner Mehdi brought up, um, I agree with that. And I think we ought to promote uniqueness and let every, um, retailer express their unique, um, branding. Um, I think this, uh, it's kind of evading us, these elements of commonality. Um, in a large PUD like this, uh, one usually has a design challenge to embrace some element of commonality. And that could be a combination of things as we've spoken of already, light fixture selection, signage based treatment. Um, certainly we want the logos and colors of every business to be unique and, and express themselves. But, uh, in, in the building architecture, as an example, the Chick-fil-A and the Lake Winds are a little more on the contemporary side, which is very nice. And the Bank of America has a very traditional cornice shaped top parapet to it, just as a differentiating feature. But it's, it's that style of architecture that they all stand up very well under their own microscope. When taken as a whole, I think we're just missing some common thread that could be incorporated, that could bring all of these together and tie them together. The pedestrian circulation is really the, frankly, the dagger to the heart for me. Um, there's three elements that, that fail. One is the discontinuous of the sidewalks that I spoke about in front of the Chick-fil-A. Um, I think that ought to be continuous all the way around there and not, not stop the sidewalk and force a user, God forbid, my mother in her wheelchair. She could be an applicant into the senior care center. So I wouldn't want her having to, um, to, to, to turn around and, and not take the loop or worse yet, go through that Chick-fil-A parking lot that's busy with double lane queuing of, of drive-throughs. The second, and just as important, is the location of the, that loop sidewalk system. You've got it right up against the curb of the driveway that goes all the way around the site. There are 14 curb cuts on that loop roadway system, 14. And you've got pedestrians, potentially in wheelchairs and walkers, um, going around there, having to cross those, uh, driveways 13, 14 times. And to have the sidewalk right up against the curb, um, you don't have that boulevard buffer. Seasonally, you need that boulevard buffer for snow plowing anyway. Otherwise, your snow blade is going to come around in the morning and dump snow right on top of the sidewalk. And it's going to be hours until somebody else comes by with their little John Deere to take that snow away. So you're missing a snow storage area. And then, uh, God forbid, the old person who has to pass a bike and someone moves over. And if that wheel falls off under the curb, now she's in traffic. So, um, the, the alignment of the sidewalk to that, um, vehicular route, uh, should be separated with a safety boulevard for snow storage and safety. Uh, I, I think that's very important. So the discontinuation of the sidewalks, the, the fact that they're right along the curb and we have 14, uh, crossings there, making it very difficult for someone to make that loop drive, um, really, um, I, I think is a dagger to my heart on the integration of pedestrian circulation in this plan. Um, I, I, I think the plan started out with good intentions by taking users and each user has their own unique site plan prototype that they plopped onto this site. And then someone at the end said, oh yeah, let's connect, connect them all with sidewalks. And it was an afterthought instead of starting with a strong pedestrian theme and giving them room. So, so that's that. In terms of the variances, I think there were seven, uh, variances that, uh, we have in the staff report. I'm okay with, uh, five of them. The two that I'm not are the, uh, like I said, the front yard setback along Flying Cloud Drive for the Chick-fil-A canopy and the parking setback on, on that same Chick-fil-A site, um, along, uh, the Fountain Place side. So that, that's where I'm at right now. It's, it's going to take something more to get my vote on this. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. Uh, Mr. Hawker, would you like to, or someone from your team like to respond to some of those items?
Um, you know, Jeff, if you want to take a stab at a few of them, there was a handful. Um, so I'm not trying to get through all of them, but, um, you know, one in particular in regards to the looping system of this, um, site plan, I think, you know, one piece, um, that we kind of looked at ultimately was, you know, we thought that the, you know, front of the buildings was ultimately going to be where the most interaction was going to be with, um, you know, pedestrians coming through this site. And so we tried to pull this loop system throughout the entire site plan to come to each one of the storefronts of the building. So you'll recognize that as you look through it. We didn't have an individual loop system because there's other pathways in order for people to get through the entire site if they wanted. They could, I guess technically get on Flying Cloud and walk around. So, you know, we kind of work within the parameters of the site, um, and, and felt, you know, through our studies and working with Mac Music Camp that ultimately getting the pedestrian to the storefront was the best path for them, um, and the safest path as well, as opposed to having an island where people would be walking down and there's traffic on one side and people parking. So that was one piece of it. I, I do recognize your comments. Obviously we've talked through that and we did look at those different variations of it. Um, you know, and I, I don't know, Jeff, if you have any others, but, um, you wanted to talk through anything that stood out to you as well that Commissioner Farr had brought up?
Yeah, this is Jeff at Westwood. Uh, definitely we could look at the landscaping and the screening from the drive-throughs to the public roads. Uh, that'd be an easy one for us to look at. Uh, we could look at backing the bank up just a little bit to see if that would help with sightlines to get around, visually around the corner of that bank before you get onto the loop road. Um, I think, let's see, what else was there? Uh, the bike racks, we could definitely take a look at, see if we can get those closer. Uh, maybe put them on the other side of the plaza for lots two and three. That would get those a lot closer to the front door. Those are most of the things I had on my list.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Sorry, drive, drive the floor, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Uh, it's just to add on to that, um, circulation, Mr. Westendorf was asking about. There's one particular curb cut between the bank site and the Chick-fil-A that's shared. And, um, I don't know if Mr. Ru wants to chime in or not, but I suspect that the city doesn't have an opinion because this is a private road. But there's no stacking or queuing distance for incoming or outgoing vehicles to stack properly. Uh, you have a, um, an exiting situation from the Chick-fil-A drive-through where they approach that, uh, that shared driveway entrance. There's only one car length of queuing. The second car length there on the outbound Chick-fil-A blocks the driveway to the bank entrance. Conversely, if you're a, a bank, uh, person entering, uh, you come in, you have to be able to turn left almost immediately to get into the bank. And the other entrance is exit only. And any traffic whatsoever that, uh, stops you from making that turn into the bank parking lot immediately will block traffic now on your loop road, uh, because there's no stacking distance whatsoever. So I think that shared driveway is, uh, it needs further study, some separation. There's just way too much stuff going on there, um, for cross-traffic to merge, uh, stack queue and have an orderly flow of traffic.
Uh, Mr. Ru, do you want to speak to that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Commission, uh, our members of commission, uh, we did point some of those concerns, so similar concerns out to the proponent. And, um, the changes that they made were really just to add a stop sign. Um, there was no geometric changes that were, that were added. Uh, and we didn't push it, I guess, much further than that. So, um, we do see a concern there with the amount of activity coming out of the, the drive aisles, uh, and then going into the bank, uh, as well as the interaction of the parking lot in front of Chick-fil-A. So, um, it's, it's a concern. Um, but it's, it's, it's really the concern between those two property owners.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ru. Uh, Commissioner Mehdi.
Um, just as a follow-up on this subject, um, first off, I, I agree, Ed, with all of your comments, especially the ones on the architecture, but just with regards to this loop and also, um, these, uh, uh, I guess you could call them traffic conflicts. I mean, I go back and forth because this r- road that we're talking about is really just an interior, you know, drive, um, within the site. Um, even Castlemore Drive is a private road, but that, uh, you know, is designed and act, going to act a little bit more like a road. Um, I think again, these conflicts are, you know, as, as, uh, Mr. Ru said, between the property owners and then also on the loop. I think that's a valid and good comment, although I do, I do agree, again, kind of going back to the fact that this interior road is, is not really a road. It's just a way to get around a really big parking lot. Um, you know, I think about the Byerlys and the Culvers there. There's a similar situation where you kind of, there's this main drive lane. In a way, you could consider that a road, how people are coming in and out from, you know, as you're going out for many directions. So, um, you know, anybody has, has the ability to go out to the, to the main streets on those sidewalks. Castlemore, um, has, you know, uh, sidewalks with, with, with what appears to be a pretty big buffers. And when I first saw this, before you brought up that point, as I was looking at the pedestrian connections, I mainly focused on, on, um, Outlet A, um, the, the, you know, community park in the middle. I think a lot of people are going to be walking from Paravell and the senior housing to the co-op back and forth, that little park area. And I don't think there's going to be many people walking to the Bank of America or Chick-fil-A. I mean, I think realistically that will be a lot more vehicular traffic, even for the people who live in that area. So I was, I guess I just weighted, you know, the, the pedestrian access to, uh, the west. I guess that's the west or the northwest area of the site a little bit more and less so to the east. Um, so again, I'm sort of in between on that because I think it, you can look at it, uh, both ways. Uh, uh, I want to touch though, Ed, on your comment because, because you said you were, um, I think the two waivers you had issue with, one, the canopy, and then the other is the setback. So the, the staff reports recommending denial of the, um, the canopy setback. So that would still mean your yes vote. So the only, and I just want to confirm your understanding of this too, so we can decide if, if, um, there's, there's more than two of us that agree with this. Really the only issue on, on the yes vote, it, and what we're approving in the staff report is the parking setback for those 11 Chick-fil-A stalls. And you're saying you do not support that waiver. I said, I didn't like it, thought they could do more, but I wasn't going to vote no. Just, you know, hold the whole thing up just on that one detail. But if there's other commissioners who agree, I mean, may, I'm just, posing the question out loud if, if we would recommend approval subject to the staff report with, but then, um, with an amendment to that one waiver and saying that we would recommend denial, um, to that particular waiver. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
All right.
Sure. Uh, just to clarify Commissioner Mehdi's question, uh, on my position on that, um, while I, uh, have a a total agreement with staff on the canopy setback front yard, um, I'm not going to fall on my sword about the side yard setback on the south side of Chick-fil-A. Um, I wanted to express an opinion about that, uh, due to the nature that there, they have more cars on site anyway. Uh, it's my preference that that, that, that condition be, uh, that the variance be removed, but, but I'm not going to fall on my sword over that. Fundamentally, I, I would only withhold my vote, uh, for those, uh, pedestrian safety, circulation and alignment issues that I mentioned on the site plan as a whole. Um, that's, uh, that, those are the only, uh, three subcategories of my concerns about the pedestrian vehicular conflicts and safety that, uh, withhold my vote at, at this point in time. That, that looping, um, I thought was explained very effectively by, by Mr. Hawker. As a matter of fact, he had that nice graph with the red, yellow, green, uh, uh, the, the intensity of anticipated, uh, pedestrian traffic. And frankly, I, I agree with that. So I, I'm not going to disagree about the, the theory of the popularity of the loop. I'm just going to say it's there. I don't care what color it is. Um, and, uh, uh, I, I'm thinking that's my mom and it's not safe. Um, it's discontinuous as she wants to walk in a circle. They will, they want to, that's what they do. And this stems primarily from the fact that this is a mixed use PUD. Mixed use. So I want to make sure that the, it, it's different from another, um, non-pedestrian oriented development. Uh, this is supposed to integrate the other uses in the PUD. That's all. I think they have a greater charge.
Mr. Hawker, would you like to speak? And just one thing, Commissioner Farr, I'm not sure if something happened with your mic or something, but I'm getting a lot of feedback when you talk now. Although it might be on my end too. I don't know. If you want to check your mic. Uh, Mr., Mr. Hawker?
Could I just request, uh, Mr. Hawker, could you put up the site plan, um, presentation again, that might help just our conversations? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we, we want to keep things moving too. I don't want to get hung up on my thoughts here on this, but let me pull this up. Um, so I'm going to pull up this particular plan. I think this gives a, a better context of it, but, um, you know, let me back up actually here. So as we look at this overall trade area, you know, Eden Prairie is unique and, and I've kind of pointed this out too, but the biggest thing here is really balancing the fact that, you know, people are going to be traveling here by automobile. And so this is a regional trade area. And so, you know, what we've tried to do is look at this site the best we can in terms of trying to figure out the best pedestrian, pedestrian pathways. And so, you know, the Commissioner Farr's comment, I mean, you know, I, I feel obviously for his grandmother, I don't want, you know, a scenario like that to be uh, an issue for this site overall. But I think, you know, the, the looping system, I, I do think is, um, you know, fairly strong, given the fact that, you know, we, we do have adequate, um, pathways throughout this entire site, um, for people to get in and out of the entire project, um, in a safe manner. And I think, as you had mentioned as well, this isn't, you know, this isn't Prairie Center Drive, this roadway here. You know, this is, you know, consistent with like you had mentioned, the Barley's, you know, drive aisles between the Culvers or whatever it might be. So I, I think the traffic volume there is going to be very low. And, you know, again, um, it's just different. I, I think. I, I think ultimately too, this, you know, this pathway that we had created with this loop system was pretty well thought out and trying to figure out how can we balance, again, you know, the, the site configuration and irregular shape while keeping this in place, so. You wanted another site plan up? Was there something else that you wanted to bring up as well? I'm sorry.
No, it's helpful just to revisit this, thank you.
I'm sorry, did I cut you off, Mr. Hawker? Were you still talking?
No, I'm trying to. Technical difficulties, this was new for me, so.
Okay. Other commission members, I, I guess I'd like to hear, there's a few kind of issues flowing around the issue regarding the canopy request. Some discussion around the loop and possibly that parking setback waiver, and then also I'd like to hear some overall comments from some of the commissioners about how they're feeling about this right now. Looks like Commissioner Gooding.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Being a new commissioner, it's interesting to hear the comments and, and learn a little bit about this. Specifically with the canopy. I made a trip coming back from Phoenix right after the COVID issues and made many stops on the road when we were eating in our cars and, and doing things like that, and developed an affinity for Chick-fil-A. And I think most of them I went through had the canopies and some of them were during times of bad weather. So from a user perspective, I understand that. Then you're bumping that up against the design standards of Eden Prairie. And I'm in the process of learning those, so. But I think as we go through some of the changes we're going to see in the world, maybe we need to think about that. You know, from, from the user point of view and, and make it more user-friendly. Does it really take away, maybe the design could be altered or something like that, but from a user perspective, I think it makes it a more friendly user experience. And ultimately, that's what keeps restaurants in business in our cities. I share Ed's concern about the loop trail. You know, the, the perspective of being up against the road, when they plow that road, the snow is going to be on the trail and it will probably be a considerable amount of time before it would be cleared. I do a lot of walking on the trails around the lake over there, also do a lot of biking. And I know when we, we park our bikes and try to use a facility, we like to be relatively close to it. So those would be my comments. I also, the one I had in mind when I studied these drawings, I had was also the traffic flow that, that Commissioner Farr pointed out. But again, as somebody else pointed out, this is a private road and that really comes down to the businesses, so. But from a vote perspective, I would probably go with what the staff has recommended. Those are just my comments, so, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooding. Other commission members. Commissioner Toomey. I'm sorry. Rachel, I'm sorry. Commissioner Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Marcus, I agree with what everyone is saying here with the canopy. I guess one question I had for Chick-fil-A maybe is, have they considered other orientations on this site with that canopy or their layouts? Or have they done other creative, taken other creative measures on other sites to enable them to have some sort of canopy? Or a, a feature that allows them to have this, this comfort for, for people attending their restaurants? And, and can they get creative? You know, I appreciate that the restaurant has to function and the site has to function, but just wondering if they've looked at other options for that. And then before going there, I think the pedestrian continuation of pedestrian access in this space is very important. And beyond the residents that are going to be living here, I think about when I go to a place of business, a grocery store, and I want to go to the restaurant, you know, just across the street. It's really nice when there's a sidewalk that makes sense to be connected. There's obvious and logical places for pedestrians to be. When it's just kind of a wanderland of, of parking, it, it doesn't make as much sense and it doesn't seem as friendly and welcoming to have easy access to those places. And I think that, that's just something we should continue to push forward, even though we're a community of drivers in some regards. You know, let's create a place where we park once and can easily access all these different spaces. And having the residents, Presbyterian Homes residents especially, in such close proximity, I think just enhances the reason that we should really take a, a second look at how people are moving in the space and making sure that it's friendly for them.
Thank you, Commissioner Marcos.
This is Jen Santelli from Chick-fil-A, I'd be happy to talk about the canopy just, just a little bit. We, we did look at a bunch of different layouts on the site. The problem is, is that at the end of the day, you still have to have the pickup window on the driver's side door. And so you're really limited to how you can orient the building on this site and how you can have that drive-through flow through the site. Because it, because at the end of the day, like I said, you have to have that, that particular thing happen, the pickup window on the driver's side door. But we do have a lot of different canopy designs that we've done for different municipalities that have, have exacted a little higher standards. The problem for us is that when you start to enhance that canopy, it really kind of takes on a life of its own. And the way it is now with it, it's only nine feet clear on the underside of that canopy. Whereas like a gas station canopy is probably close to twice that. So it's really like a smaller scale and we try to keep it smaller. Now, if you wanted to, to say, yeah, we'll approve it with, with an enhanced design, we'd absolutely take a look at that. And, and just one, one comment that was made a little bit earlier is that they, I think it was, I'm trying to see which commissioner it was. I'm not sure which one. That said that he wouldn't support the, the parking setback because we had so much parking. The 70 spaces that it says are on Chick-fil-A's site is a little inconsistent with what is actually going on. We only have 52 spaces on our immediate parcel. 18 of the spaces for that 70 are over in the grocery store's parking lot. So we really do want to keep those 11 spaces because 52 spaces for us, if you took away the 11, now we'd be down to 41, is not a lot of parking for as, as successful as we hope that this restaurant is. And so I just wanted to bring that to the attention, we, we don't actually have 70 parking spaces. Places right in that.
Thank you, Ms. Santelli. The other commissioners like to speak, I'm just looking to see if there's any waves or, yes.
Julie's waving.
Julie, Julie, then Commissioner Gooding.
Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. I sound like that commercial for the cell phone, can you hear me now? So I'd like to provide a little more clarity on the parking for the Chick-fil-A. So while the site plan includes information that says a total of 70 stalls and I think 18 of them are on the grocery store site. The Chick-fil-A site itself does have 52 parking spaces. City code requires 38 parking spaces. So as I mentioned in my comments, the site exceeds code requirements, but they have parked it based on their business need. So that's why there are several different numbers floating around, so I just wanted to provide that clarity as that becomes a potential discussion item for the, for the commission members.
Thanks, Julie, Commissioner Gooding.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only comment I'd like to make is to the, the Chick-fil-A representative related to the parking areas. And if you go to your store in Chanhasan, there's a number of parking places designed not, well, a bit different than this, that are routinely blocked by the lines for the drive-through. So when people go to pick up food, some of them are the pickup spots. Some of them are for where, obviously, nobody's going in the restaurant now, but for pickup spots, and then they've got to sit there and tune at people to get them the pause so that they can back out through the lines. So the positioning of a lot of these spaces is right in your feeding for your drive-through. And the utility of them is probably not exactly what you think. So that's the end of my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooding. Commissioner Mitty.
I, I can't help but comment here, even though I'm not Chick-fil-A, but, but my, I think that's a good point you bring up in, in centers that I've done. The, the, at least the first few stalls, the ones that are probably at highest risk of, of interference. I would suggest the tenant designate those as employee parking. That way, those cars are there all day long, there's only one time they're trying to get out. That's sort of the solution that I've seen that works well.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitty. Any other follow-up commissioner comments? Just looking, scrolling through my screen here, see if anyone's. All right. Just some of my thoughts on this, I, it was interesting, I, I was at Culvers the other day, that wasn't very interesting, but as I was in the drive-through, I looked up and I remember the conversation about Culvers and their branding, and I thought to myself that it, it looks nice and I know it's a Culvers, and then I also, I was sitting there waiting, I noticed the, the walkway over to Byerlys. And I thought it, it, it does kind of stick out nice. When we did, when this first came through, we did have a, there was this vision where I kind of like what I think Commissioner Farr and Commissioner Mitty were talking about is that we, you would be walking around the entire way and it'd all be one kind of big unit. Cohesive unit, but I'm a little bit on the fence with that. I, I think that, I agree that most of that walking traffic will just kind of go into a different area, kind of on the, the other more heat maps. So I'm just a little bit on the fence with that. I, I agree that with Commissioner Kirk that it's a canopy too far, I kind of like that comment, so. I'm kind of siding with no canopy and I think I'm okay with the parking setback. But I'm a little, a bit on the fence with the loop. So I kind of, taking notes from here, we've, we've heard from, I, I feel like we're leaning towards a denial of the canopy setback. But then we have this kind of issue of the loop that is drawing some definite concerns from some of the commission members, so. I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in on that or if we're at a point where we need to just kind of make a decision. Commissioner Mitty.
I'd be ready to make a motion if nobody has a comment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Kirk.
Commissioner Kirk, go ahead.
Move to recommend approval for a planned unit development concept review on 7.27 acres. Planned unit development amendment with waivers on 7.27 acres and a site plan review on 5.479 acres based on plan stamped dated May 14th, 2020, and the staff report dated May 22nd, 2020, with simply the clarification that the staff report does, does not include a waiver for the canopy.
Commissioner Mitty seconds that.
One second, Julie has a clarifying comment before a second.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in Commissioner Kirk's motion, I did not hear preliminary plat. I only heard site plan, beauty concept review, PUD, and site plan, I didn't see preliminary plat. Or here, excuse me, here.
And in fact, in what I was reading, Julie, I don't believe preliminary plat is included in that.
In the, okay, in the staff recommendation, it also includes preliminary plat of an outlot into three lots and two outlots on 7.47 acres.
I'm, I'm comfortable with adding that statement to my motion.
Okay, so I have a, a motion.
Commissioner Mitty seconds that entire motion.
All right, and Commissioner Mitty in a second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, let me just make sure I do a roll here. The aye votes, Commissioner Kirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitty?
Aye.
Commissioner Farr? Nay for Farr. Commissioner Higgins? Commissioner Higgins, we can't hear you and you're on mute now.
It's off for a while. My son's, aye.
Okay, Commissioner Higgins, aye. Commissioner DeSantis? Commissioner DeSantis?
Aye.
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 Okay. Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Marcos?
Aye.
Commissioner Toomey?
Aye.
Commissioner Piper's an aye as well. And it looks like you have your approval from the planning commission. Good luck, thank you for your presentation and answering our questions.
Thank you.
All right. That's the end of the public hearings this evening. Next up, we are moving to any planners' reports, can you do it?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, just an update, you will receive an email tomorrow as well, but your next meeting will be June 22nd. The June 8th planning commission meeting is being canceled.
Okay, thank you, Julie. And do we have any members' reports this evening? Commissioner Toomey, are you raising your hand? Okay. All right, no members' reports this evening. I think I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn. Commissioner Farr, motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I think Commissioner Gooding or Commissioner DeSantis, say aye.
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 All right, opposed?
Aye.
All right, our first virtual meeting's adjourned, thank you everyone for your patience as we work through it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, see you June, middle of June sometime. All right, commission, planning commission's adjourned. Good night all.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.